The redevelopment agency meeting of Monday, April the 26th with a roll call, please.
Chairman Smith?
Here.
Agency Patterson here. Secretary. Agency members, Ratty?
Here.
Salerno?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Carrigan?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Carey?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Okay, this is our public comment time. I do not have any cards. Would anybody like to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the agency. Approval of the agenda, please. Anybody like to move anything or pull anything?
Move to approve as outlined by staff after Chairman.
We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as listed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passing unanimously. Number three, recommendation to approve the minutes of our regular meeting of March the 22nd, 2010. Does anybody like to make any changes? Looking for a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion, can I have a second? We have a motion, second, to approve the regular meeting minutes of March the 22nd, 2010. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passing unanimously. Number four, report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period March 4th through April 7th, 2010. Any questions? Got a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
This is all a Gino show. Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passing unanimously. Okay, number five, consideration and possible approval of the redevelopment agency funding for the city to award the Victorian Square Phase 2A Public Improvement Project Base Bid and Alternate One Bid, number 09-10-025, PWP number WA 210-211 to Q and D Construction Incorporated in the amount of $833,144.20.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Chris Cobb, City Sparks Public Works Department, here before you this afternoon. What we're requesting for is the redevelopment agency to approve the funding that will be later approved by the city council, the actual award of the project. The requirement of funding from the redevelopment agency is $833,144.20. This is for the completion of the Phase 2 project, which will build the two-way, one-way streets. It'll redo a portion of the roadway in front that is outlined here, in front of Victorian Square, in front of the Nugget, which includes lighting, redoing of the improvements around with expanding the plaza. It'll also repaint some of the things to be a more consistent nature than we have down there, instead of about 35 different colors. Hopefully, we'll only have two. We'll have black or the olive drap. This project will be brought before you again in council for actual award. That is to Q and D contractors here locally. Speaking with Q and D, we're looking at employing about 35 to 40 people between Q and D and their subcontractors, of which all the contractors are local.
When will we start this project?
This project hopefully would start within a week to a week and a half of approval this evening.
Mr. Mayor? Chris, what was the original estimate on this?
Original estimate of this project was two and a half million, two years ago.
So now it's down to 833?
Actually, the total award of the project will be $1.224 million with the other funds.
So it's down considerably anyways, what the point I was trying to make.
Much considerably. The estimate this year, we estimated around 1.8 million, and it came even below that.
Okay, thanks. And I know I keep asking this question because I keep forgetting. Does this include the signal at the intersection?
No, sir.
That's a separate.
That's a separate, yes, sir.
Mr. Kerry?
Thank you. I'm going to ask you some generic questions, only because I've had a bunch of, well, a bunch, I had five emails about this, okay?
Interesting blocks today.
Yes. And so, one of the questions is, was this put out the bid?
Yes, sir. This was publicly bid.
Publicly bid?
Yes, sir.
By the procedures that we use in City of Sparks?
By the purchasing department?
There was nothing under the table with this?
No, sir.
Okay, and Q and D was the lowest bidder?
Q and D was the lowest bidder.
And has Q and D ever done a project like this before?
Yes, they built Golden Eagle Park at almost $21.2 million.
Okay, and is this the road that goes perpendicular, I guess, to Victorian, and then is it the two, the two other roads?
Yeah.
And this is the one that we used eminent domain to condemn part of the property, so that road, that road right there at your fingers is going over that property, correct?
This road will come down and through this property, and then Pacific Prom Brokers has been demolished. This road will come down and tie into the property. These will be your two one-way streets.
And that, when we condemn that property, it was for a public project, meaning the road, correct? And that's all we can do is put the road on it, is that correct?
We're putting the road there, yes, sir.
Okay.
This time.
Let's see, I'm trying to remember the other question. Budget, where did the money for this budget come, or this project come from?
This was, this will be budgeted from the redevelopment agency, from room tax.
From room tax. And can we use that room tax to pay salaries in the City of Sparks?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Just one last question, follow up on Mr. Carrigan's Fund 3401. Can that fund be used for salaries and benefits?
I would have to defer that question to Mr. Cobb.
Would you mind repeating?
We have two sources of revenue, 14, 15, room tax. Mr. Carrigan's already asked a question of whether that could be used for salaries and benefits. The answer to that question was no. Fund 3401, redevelopment agency area one, can that fund be used for salaries and benefits?
Yes, it could be.
As long as those services are shown to be a benefit to the redevelopment agency. For example, you could not charge a park maintenance activity at the Golden Eagle Park. It would have to be something which is directly associated and for the benefit of the redevelopment agency.
That's exactly right.
Can we pay for fire services out of that money?
That would be a stretch.
I would say that that would not be a unique benefit applying to the redevelopment agency and would more properly be funded by the general fund.
Can we think of anything with a 50-some layoff, so we just did, that this money can be used for?
I think the budget as presented does not make a reliance upon redevelopment agency covering services which are properly placed within the City of Sparks' general fund, so therefore I would say no.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Is that it, Chris?
I was going to point out for gentlemen and ladies, that with the project, there's a couple phases with this project. Phase one is along Victorian where the roadway's going to be redone with concrete. There'll be an opening to allow movements left-hand and left-outs with these one-way streets. This has to be completed by July 2nd, for the Fourth of July weekend. The two areas in orange, both of these areas, will be cleared for the event. The area in red, that area will be most likely closed off during construction because of hazards that'll still be there. All heavy equipment will be moved off-site to remove any visual sightlines with watching the fireworks. After the Fourth of July weekend, Q and D will take back over this area in orange, and this whole area is supposed to be complete by July 22nd, so that we're ready for hot August nights.
Okay. And one other rumor I heard was that we were going to take out the fountain, and that's not true.
No, sir. Fountain's standard. Not known near and.
Which is connected to the Avenue of the Oaks.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions, comments? Looking for a motion?
Move to approve, Agenda item five is outlined by staff, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passing unanimously. Okay, we're moving to number six, and I'll get there. It must be you again, Chris.
Yes, sir. And this time, Chair of the agency and members of the agency, let me get that correct. Chris Cobb, in City of Sparks Public Works. What you have before you this evening is consideration, possible approval of the purchase of the tree gates for the Victorian Square Phase 2 public project. This is for the City Sparks, or for the redevelopment agency to approve the purchase of these, and we would supply them to the contractor for installation. These are the same grates that we've used on the various projects downtown and to keep with consistency and everything and the look. This is why this is before you this evening from Nina.
Did we use grates on Victorian Avenue? I don't think we did. Didn't we just?
Yes, sir. With RTC project, they do have tree gates down there as well.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for Chris? Looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the tree grates on Victorian Square Phase 2A. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passing unanimously. Okay. Don't go off the agenda, I have to get it. Okay, ratification of exception to competitive bid in agreement to purchase streetlights and bollards for Victorian Square Phase 2A. Chris?
Mr. Chair, members of the agency, I'm again here before you for Victorian Phase 2 project. This is for the acceptance to competitive bid and the purchase of streetlights and bollards for the Victorian Square Phase 2A project. Here again, we'll be purchasing these directly and supplying to the contractor install. This is for consistency, again, using the same bollards and supplier. We'll be using LED lighted bollards, as well as the LED decorative Victorian lights. Most recently, those were put on the Victorian Square, or Victorian Avenue project with RTC just finished.
It turned out great.
Turned out great, and there's about a 40% reduction in use of energy using LED lights. So we'll have a consistency, and we'll start to fill these out with LEDs downtown.
Okay, any questions for Chris? Looking for a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passing unanimously. Okay. Thank you so much. Number eight, consideration and possible approval of Sparks Redevelopment Agency Resolution Number 127, a resolution authorizing the issuance of tax increment refunding revenue bonds by the redevelopment agency in the City of Sparks, Nevada, and the execution and delivery of documents relating there, too.
Good afternoon again. Mr. Cobb?
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chair, members of the agency. We have before you a, for your consideration, a refunding that we actually started last fall and was approved to proceed, I believe is in November. However, market conditions, if you recall, were just not conducive at the time to proceed with that, with that refunding, with that sale at that time. I'm actually brought here with me Marty Johnson, who is our financial advisor on that, on that particular deal, and he can probably share with you a lot better than I can, as far as the ins and outs of what happened last fall and then how we got here today. But what we have before you today is just for your approval, the refunding, which we had the pricing for today, and it actually went well, and we're ready to proceed with that based upon your approval.
You know, I thought we gave you permission to buy the bonds whenever it was right.
We did, and now is. That's when.
So I mean, why does that come before us again?
To approve the actual pricing and to, yeah, to approve the actual marketing and proceed with the sale and the closing, which upon your approval will close on May 11th, if I have that date right.
He's going to tell us, isn't he?
Yeah. At that, I think, I think I'll turn it over to Marty, and he could tell you better about the market and how it went today. I was a little preoccupied.
Good afternoon, for the record, Marty Johnson, as Jeff mentioned, the financial advisor to the city and the agency. The reason we've got the bonds back before you today is that for redevelopment agency bonds, we cannot delegate the acceptance of a best bid like we could if this were a city transaction. So we have brought before you this afternoon a, what I will call finished product. To give you a little bit of background, the 2,000 bonds were issued at interest rates just under 6%. As Jeff mentioned, we tried to do this deal last fall. We were unable to get it completed because of market conditions. The 2,000 bonds were sold so that they can only be prepaid twice a year, and so we had to wait for that next opportunity to roll around, which comes up in July. And so that's when we were able to do the deal today. In terms of a bond rating, we were able to get an A-, which is an excellent rating for a tax allocation bond in the state of Nevada. And after a pricing today, after some difficult back-and-forth last week in terms of finding buyers for these particular types of bonds, we were able to get interest rates just under 5% that will generate present value savings, in other words, savings in today's dollars over the next 13 years of $970,000 for the redevelopment agency. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We also have Kendra Fallett, Bond Counsel, here, who could address them.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure that we, the public understands, we're refinancing existing bonds that are at 6% today, and new bonds will be at 5%. The 1% is additional revenues you're going back into the district.
That's correct.
Over a 13-year period.
Correct.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, we did put in next-year savings in that budget that we presented this morning.
Good job.
I was hopeful.
Okay, any more questions? Looking for a motion?
Move to approve, Sparks Redevelopment Agency Resolution Number 127 is presented.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passing unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to comments from the agency and Chief Administrative Officer. Any comments? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just was curious on the change of format today.
What's that?
That we've had lengthy discussions about five, six years ago of moving the redevelopment agency behind the city council meeting, and we haven't changed today. Is this a, is this a permanent change, or what's the story here?
That's the way my agenda was submitted to me. Mr. Carrigan, Chair?
I just wanted to let you know, we needed to do this today to allow the Finance Director to carry out your actions before 5 o'clock today, so we were, did move the agency ahead of the city council on this one-time-only basis to accommodate the bond activities.
Thank you very much, that's all I needed.
Thank you. Any more comments, questions? We are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting of April 26th with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini?
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here. Council members, Ratty?
Here.
Salerno?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Carrigan?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
City Manager Carey?
Here.
City Attorney Adams?
Here.
Pastor Bossler here?
Yes.
Good, okay. Could all stand for the invocation, Pastor Pete Bossler, Crosswind.
Thank you. You guys need prayer.
We did it a couple hours ago, too.
Yeah, I was. I was listening to the news at the same time, so you needed it. But God, difficulties aside, we need your overwhelming wisdom for this city council, for the police department, for the fire department, and for all the city workers. These are difficult times for our city, not just for those people that were affected with it, but for our city, but we know that good things are on the horizon. I pray for streams of revenue to come into the minds of city council members and city workers. New ideas and freshness, just like the springtime in our city looks so great. I pray there'll be springtime in the spirits of all the people in this city. I think we're in for good times because we know your presence is here, Lord. Thank you for good leadership. Thank you for a great city manager, for wonderful council members, and for a chief, a head city person like our mayor here. I pray that this meeting would go great, that it would be the highlight of the day. And one more thing, I pray for all the city council members that have been affected since today, that maybe they won't see the letting families be hurt tonight, that it was something hadn't touched and comforted them. And we ask all this in your mighty name. Amen.
Thanks Pastor Bossler, you're a great word, means a lot.
Thank you.
Could you may standing for the, please, Mr. Salerno, would you read?
I would read it, it's to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the world, which stands one nation under God, and the invisible, the invisible being accessible.
So next is comments from the public. I have no cards. Anybody want to speak in the comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. And I'd like to, with the adults of the council, move 6.7 up under the presentation items. Is that supposed to be a presentation item, or is that an? Anyone else want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. Oops, Mr. Schmidt, I believe.
A motion to approve, Mr. Mayor. Second.
Been moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve the agenda as amended. Let me get back to. Okay, any further discussion? Please vote again, I'm sorry. I'm away from here. That's what you get for doing the redevelopment meeting Thursday. Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, next is recommendation to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 12th, 2010. Eight additions or corrections? If not, looking for a motion, Mr. Smith?
Move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 12th. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, next is presentation of items. Proclamation, Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful's Great Truckee Meadows Community Cleanup Day, and I believe we have Mia Dixon here, if you want to come up, please, and I'll read the proclamation. Have a seat, Mia. Whereas Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful is a local nonprofit organization dedicated to creating a cleaner, more beautiful region through education and active community involvement. And whereas Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful has established the Great Truckee Meadows Community Cleanup as an annual open space cleanup.
To raise awareness about illegal dumping. And whereas the Great Truckee Meadows Community Cleanup is celebrating its fifth anniversary in 2010 and has already engaged over 1,700 volunteers and cleared more than 400 tons of illegally dumped items from open space areas. And whereas the partners and sponsors of the 2010 Great Truckee Meadows Community Cleanup are the City of Sparks Parks and Recreation Department, Washoe County Regional Parks and Open Space, City of Reno, United States Forest Service, Bureau of Land Management, Reno Sparks Indian Colony, Truckee Meadows Weed Coordinating Group, Nevada Land Conservancy, Truckee River Fund, Sun Valley General Improvement District, Hobie's Casino and Restaurant, Waste Management, American Auto Wrecking, Inc., Clean Harbors Environmental, Bridgestone Firestone, Tire Plus, Sierra Restroom Solutions, Save Mart Supermarket, Pepsi, Sparks Chamber of Commerce, Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce, and the New Belgium Brewery. And whereas the Truckee Meadows is proud of its natural resources and its neighborhoods and seeks to protect and improve our community through the action of citizens, schools, government, and businesses working together. And whereas the City of Sparks recognizes the importance of improving our community through litter prevention, beautification, and solid waste management initiatives, and is committed to spreading the word about the importance of volunteerism and motivating everyone in our community to become stewards of the environment. Now therefore, I, Gino, our Martini Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim May 8th, 2010, Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful's Great Truckee Meadows Community Cleanup Day. Say a few words, Mia, please.
Thank you, Council Mayor. I just can't thank you all enough of the appreciation Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful has for your support of this Great Truckee Meadows Community Cleanup. From Mayor Martini's list of supporters and sponsors of this cleanup, you can tell that it is truly a collaborative effort, and there are many hands in making this program work. So again, just thank you very much for your support, and hopefully we'll see you out on May 8th.
Thank you for all the good work you do, Mia. You and your group do a wonderful job, so thank you.
Okay, next is consent items. Anybody want to pull any of the consent items? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. I'd like to pull item 4.5, 4.4, and 4.5.
5.4 and 5.5.
We had 6.7.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just a second, this will just take a second, I blew it. Kathy, I'm sorry. Okay, we need 5.4 and 5.5 pulled. Anyone else? Mr. Salerno?
5.6.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve the rest. Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 5.1 through 5.3 as outlined by staff.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 5.1 through 5.3. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 5.4, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wayne, how you doing?
Good.
Good. It appears on the heading of these things that they're both for the same services. Can you just explain what the differences in services of these two companies are providing?
One of the proposals is for review services of the initial appraisals. The first scope is $69,000, and Johnson and Perkins will provide the review appraisals of the 13 properties. These appraisals are, we're following the Uniform Act for acquiring easements and right-ofway, and, which is why the review appraisals are required.
So, we're hiring somebody for $29,250 bucks to do a review appraisal, and then we're hiring somebody else for $69,000 to review those review appraisals, to review, to approve those appraisals? Is that, or am I backwards?
It's a sec, you're backwards. The $69,000 is to do the appraisals, and the review appraisals is like a second opinion to verify that the numbers are good.
And we wonder why government costs so much money.
Any other questions? Are you looking for a motion on 5.4, and I'm assuming 5.5?
Yeah, it's one of the same thing. Maybe I can just go ahead and, Chris, is this required by law?
Yes, per Uniform Act.
The revised statute, or what, what Uniform Act are we trying to, who's dictating to this government body what they have to do?
It is both the federal and state law that requires this.
Thank you.
Are you looking for a motion on 5.4 and 5.5? Mr. Smith?
Move to approve 5.4 and 5.5. Second?
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Council Salerno to approve 5.4 and 5.5. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Wayne. 5.6, Mr. Salerno?
Yes, I'll be abstaining from this consideration and award due to a industry relationship with Gerhart &amp; Berry Construction.
Okay, looking for a motion on 5.6, Mr. Carrigan?
Move to approve.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 5.6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes 4 to 0 with one abstention. Okay, now, what we've all been waiting for all day is Mr. Lewis. I'm sorry, took me so long to get to you, but, so what we are looking at here is presentation on allocation of the recovery zone facility bond capacity and issuance of said bonds.
Thank you for bumping me up to the presentation area. This is just to give you a synopsis of what occurred during the RZF bond process. It will be continuing on, but the selections have been made. This is the background on it. This was part of the ARRA Act of 2009. Funds were given out based on population and job loss, and you've had most of this, the background, in the previous staff reports. Once again, City of Sparks did not receive an allotment, and just for edification on everyone's part that's listening to this, or will see it later on, City of Reno and Washoe County are not actually expending any money on this. This is not coming out of their budget. This has nothing to do with their budgets. This is a way to facilitate, facilitate the issuance of the bonds, so that the people that issue them are getting a tax-free basis on the bonds. So it's to make the money better for them. The timeline on this, Washoe County and City of Reno put out notices starting in October 2009, and based on the responses they started getting back, a subcommittee was formed from all three jurisdictions, even though City of Sparks had no, no funding. March first, fourteen projects, which was the deadline date, they had to be submitted by that date, fourteen projects were submitted. On March twenty-sixth, six projects were presented. On April eighth, four more projects were presented. Four projects did withdraw. They withdrew, either they couldn't find a place to put their facility that they wanted or they knew they weren't going to be able to get the bonding because these companies that are going to go forward are responsible for getting all the bonds. They have to pay for it, they have to follow through with it. It has nothing to do with the counties or the cities. The subcommittee finalized the rankings on the sixteenth and this week, the rankings are being presented to all the jurisdictions. So City of Sparks is actually seeing it first. Seven companies were allocated funding. There was approximately a hundred and twenty-five million dollars that could be bonded out. The first one to receive funding and these are in the rank order that they finally came in. They were, they ranked all these projects three different ways. The subcommittee members all put in their two cents on what they wanted to get, how much money and which parcels were going, which projects would get it. So Castaways Incorporated is doing a Reno Eco Energy Park. They are going to be getting twenty million dollars to bond out. Nevada Land LCC, which is part of their freight house project, is getting twenty-point-six million. Titan Energy Systems is installing a manufacturing plant, a photovoltaic manufacturing plant. This is the one company in Sparks. So this company is going to be in Sparks. So I'll digress here for one second. Titan Energy Systems is actually out of India. They're one of the largest photovoltaic companies in the world. They wanted the door in the United States and this bonding facility allowed them to come in. They are putting in four million dollars of their own money to do this. I spoke with the representative this morning. He's not at liberty to say where it's going to go yet. They're still in negotiations, actually over four locations. All four locations are in Sparks someplace. So this is going to come to Sparks. When they're done with this and they find their place and things start rolling, he very much wants to come before the council and explain to you what's going on and what they do and how the whole thing works. So that'll be an upcoming agenda item. They are predicting that they're going to have thirty-seven permanent jobs here and I think that's about all I can say about it for what they want out. They actually, they're assuming based on that they can get a place to put this facility, they will actually have people in place and be shipping things out the door as of November. So this is ready to roll and they're in it very quickly. One thing I should also probably point out, most of these companies that came forward through the bonding process and Mr. Carrigan or Ms. Ratty can speak to this as well, they were absolutely queried on how fast can you get this done? You know, we want jobs out the door. This was very, very important. So that's how a lot of these companies fell out, was how fast they could get jobs. The next one is from IMG Energy. It's an energy gasification plant. According to what was presented, this is going to be right next door to the Castaways facility, which is going to be on Fourth Street. They are not, they're symbiotic. They were not codependent on each other. So this energy gasification plant was going to go whether or not Castaways received any money to do their new plant. Hudson Realty is putting up a couple of hotels in the Vista Hills. If you don't know where that is, it's basically out Lemon Valley, out like where that railies is. They have a whole complex out there. They already have the land. This is allowing them to go forth. The way they described it was it's going to look a little bit like what's going on in the Damone Ranch area, how they have extended stay and overnight stay kind of hotels so that they can feed off of each other and that's what this project is. The Tassera Office Project is from Northern Nevada Urban Development Company. That's going to be in downtown Reno. And GASNC is getting money to put up photovoltaic, actually to do photovoltaic stuff at the Stedwastewater Treatment Plant to help them on their energy costs. If you have any questions, shout out. I only have two more slides. If, after, and you'll see on the financial timeline, so maybe I should have put this after, but if any of those projects fall through, they can't get their bonding for whatever reason or they don't pass their due diligence, these were the next two-tier allocations that would be put out. So this, these two companies will come into play if somebody else drops out of the first round. The financial timelines by April thirtieth, which yes, is the end of this week, the applications are due from the companies that were picked on the first tier and they have to put forth a fifty thousand earnest money due. That is to pay for staff time to do all the due diligence that is required to make sure that they will be able to pass the bonding requirements. Staff performs the due diligence. In July, the bond resolutions will be approved. August twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, a progress report was put forth for the companies. They have to come back to the City of Reno and Washoe County since they're ultimately the passed-through places for the, for the money. And at that point, decisions will be made. If companies are not going the way they should, then Tier Two allocations will start being happening. August thirtieth is when they would like to issue the bonds, if not sooner. September, we'll reallocate if we have to. December tenth is the last day to issue the bonds. They have to be out the door by December thirty-first. So everything has to be a done deal by December tenth. We figured that would be enough time to do the paperwork. And that's it.
Questions for Ms. Lewis? Okay?
Thank you.
Well done, Kathy. Thank you. Okay, let's move. Let's move on to general business review and possible acceptance of a donation of fertilizer purchased for seventy-seven, seventy-four from the Sparks Youth Sports Foundation for field improvements at various youth, various youth sports fields in Sparks. That was a tough one, Tracy. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council Members. Tracy Dominguez, Recreation Superintendent. As you're well aware, over the years, the Parks and Recreation Department or the Parks Division of Parks and Rec has experienced major reduction in manpower, man-hours needed to maintain our park system. Any monetary and/or physical donation is greatly appreciated during these tough economic times. Recognizing that we cannot do what we've done in past years, the Sports Youth Sports Foundation has purchased this fertilizer from John Deere Landscape to be applied to our various youth sports fields, which just helps us to maintain the quality and integrity of our facilities for all the kids that play on them. So I am here to ask you to approve this very generous donation.
Thanks, Tracy. And Sparks Youth Sports Foundation's really stepped up to the plate, haven't they? Trying to help with maintenance and with fields and fertilizing.
Not just as a foundation, but even some of the individual youth sports organizations have stepped up independently as well. So we're hearing from the sport, the groups that they represent as well as the foundation as a whole.
Yeah, little leagues and those kind of things are stepping up to the plate too. So you know, in the times we have now, it's critical that these people do that. You know, it's to their benefit, I think, to do it. So we really appreciate what, everything they've done. Any further questions or if not looking for a motion, Mr. Smith?
They did this last year too, didn't they? Or is this a new group?
I believe in the fall, it was on Pop Warner actually came forward with fertilizer.
So like the mayor said, everybody's stepping up.
They're all intertwined. The Youth Sports Foundation represents all of the affiliated youth programs in Sparks. So Pop Warner falls under that umbrella.
Okay, thank you. I move to accept the donation as outlined.
Do you have a second? Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Salerno to approve Agenda Item six point one. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. Okay, six point two, consideration and possible approval of a thousand dollar donation for Partners and Parks and Recreation from the Sertoma Club of Sparks. Who's doing this?
Hey, Stu. Hi.
You want Stu Schiefer up here?
Yeah, I think he should come up here.
He's not paying attention.
I did not do the staff report.
Hey, Stan. We need you, we need you up here.
Some questions on this one.
This is a pretty difficult agenda item that we. Consideration possible approval of a thousand dollar donation for Partners and Parks and Recreation from the Sertoma Club of Sparks. Mr. Mayor? Oh, Mr. Schmidt, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'll get staff off the hook here. I'll make a recommendation to approve item six point two as outlined by staff.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve Agenda Item six point two. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Good presentations, guys.
Thank you. The Sertoma Club sponsors our Junior Giants program, which was a budget casualty two years ago, so that's what the money's used for.
Thank you, sir. Passes unanimously. Six point three, presentation and possible direction on updated City of Sparks fiscal year 2010 through 2015 strategic plan. Mr. Driscoll.
Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager, for the record. Item six-three is to discuss the city's strategic plan. You typically talk about this a couple of times a year. You have a retreat normally before the budget cycle starts that kind of gives direction to your staff as to the strategic direction of the city, the long-term goals, medium and long-term goals. You went through quite a process back in December of 2008. You had an outside consultant come in and kind of facilitate what you did and gave some new look and some new direction to your overall plan. Since then, your staff has worked on it. It is a living document, so from time to time, it is updated. And what you're seeing now is the most recent update of the plan. And what's important about the update on this plan is as you proceed with your budget and the approval of the final budget next month, all of your departments will take the plan as you have it here, will work in their new budget, their business plans, what was approved by the budget, plus what the direction that you've given strategically to try to work those together. So there's a couple of new things that are here and I want to remind ourselves of kind of the strategic map that we put together last time. It kind of shows a flow from the bottom towards the top in priority. And these are the four strategic goals that you have along with the six major objectives that are within those four goals. One of the things that you'll see in the next budget cycle, your management team currently is taking the six boxes that you see here are in prioritized order, starting in the upper left, working down to the bottom. We've tried in the last couple of budget presentations to tie monies that are being spent in your, in the budgets that you approve to your strategic policies and the direction that you're providing your staff. With the new Agresso system, now that that's brought in, your staff currently is looking to the six major goals that you have here underneath your four, your four major topics. And they'll be actually taking, once you approve the budget, they'll go through and for next cycle, figure out every line item, every key service that they have and tie it to one of these six basic objectives that you have. That becomes important for future budgeting purposes in that you start looking at things more based on long-term strategy and how we provide those services, so that drives itself forward. All of this is based on the triangle that we work under that has our long-term strategies, our short-term resource allocations, and that ties back to our key services, which is what we do day-to-day, which we had a long conversation earlier this afternoon on key services. These are your primary goals and your, and your citywide objectives. You see, you'll see the four that are the bolded ones and then the key objectives underneath. There are six of those, which was what I'm talking about, that moves on to the budget process next. So these are things we're familiar with. This is, you provide us direction from time to time because this is a living document. So moving forward, what you have is we've incorporated the new look from the, from our change in branding. We've added the color scheme that matches up with that. And then also, based on activity that's going on currently with the current cycle that we have, there'll be two objectives that are being added by your staff. The first one is to, is going to be preparing a citywide annual report. We currently have annual reports that are being used for different purposes and they come out at different times of the year from your departments. And typically, you receive either a presentation or at least you're given advanced copies. We use some of these for marketing purposes and some of them are for statistical reporting on performance. Your staff is taking a look at a single view that would combine those two. It would not necessarily eliminate some of the marketing pieces that would go out, such as Parks and Rec. They use theirs for a couple of things that are purely marketing and what they're doing currently needs to stay out in the, in the world and go from there. It tags on to some of the, you know, majority of the services that they do. Other ones where they're statistically based and performance-based, we're using the ICM performance measures and we're starting to kind of tighten things down along with what we're doing in our survey. The second thing that we're going to be doing is you revamped your Citizens Advisory Group, your Citizens Advisory Committee, and one of the things that was presented to them that they would be working on and involved in will be helping to assist you as policymakers with some prioritization. So we'll be incorporating the strategic plan and teaching them what's there, sharing with them, the policies that are out and the strategic direction that you've provided to your staff. And then they will work with you and through you in establishing some of those priorities in the future, which would be coming back either strategically or operationally with the budgets. So with that, the only other thing that you'll see when you get your current copy is that there's been an extra column added in with some extra detail that shows either an update and/or next steps. So each of the line items and the objectives that are in the strategic plan now should have kind of what's been worked on and/or the direction that we're going next. And everyone recognizes with the amount of resources that we've reduced over the last couple of years that this is very difficult to do. But the most important part and what your staff recognizes is that if we're not preparing for the future, when it gets here, we'll be too late. So one of the things we're trying to do is while we may not be making great progress on everything, we're trying to make at least some progress on a few things so that we're prepared and working towards the future because we know that things, whether they get better or not, we're going to need to be better in the future. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mr. Driscoll. Okay, what exactly do you, are you looking for some direction?
If the council had any, any direction that they would like to provide in addition to what we've done, that's fine. Otherwise, just accepting what we've done here and contacting myself or Teresa. If there's any questions on any of the new formats or any of the updates, we'll be happy to deal with those one-on-one and we can always bring it back into one of your other retreats if we want to take a wholesale look at any of the sections that you have in your plan.
Okay, directions for Mr. Driscoll, Ms. Ratty.
I was just going to make a motion.
Please.
Moved to accept the updated fiscal year 2010, 2015 strategic plan as presented.
Do you have a second? It's not that tough, kids. Thank you. It's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Salerno to approve Agenda Item six point three. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Six point four, consideration and possible approval of a transfer of contingency funds from the City's General Fund, eleven oh one, to exceed, not to exceed nine-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars to the Development Services Enterprise Fund, twenty-two oh one. Mr. Krutz.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martinis and Members of the Council. For the record, Neil Krutz, Community Development Director. Here today, following up on a potential transfer to the Development Services Enterprise Fund. As you'll recall, just about a year ago today, actually, I think it was April twenty-seventh last year, so a year ago tomorrow, the City Council approved a tentative budget that, with respect to the Development Services Enterprise Fund, included a two-point-nine-seven million dollar budget. And it was set up so that the revenue estimate for the period was, was estimated to be one-point-seven million dollars. And you provided a one-point-two-seven million line of credit, I'll term it for lack of a, lack of a better term, to make the fund whole and allow it to complete the year in the black or maybe not in the red. I came back and reported to you in, in November of last year as to where we were status-wise, showed you at that point in time that we were about eight percent under on expenditures for the year and that our revenue was underperforming about six-point-two percent for the year. So I'm here to update you again and also to ask you to approve a, a transfer not to exceed nine-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars. And I'll, and I'll take a couple of minutes and I'll walk you through how we got to that, that recommendation. The first is, thank you for zooming in, Joe, is a graphical presentation of the revenue forecast for the year that we're in now. You saw that we forecasted that, you know, as is relatively typical in a, in a non, a non-recession year, that the development business is cyclical. We are busier typically in the summer than we are in the winter. And that's what you're, you're seeing there. As much as I, I look at that and I see a tropical channel and I start wanting to talk about what the water level is and the velocities and do we need riprap? Okay, all right. Fell a little bit flat, all right. Fell a little bit flat, all right.
I just had to see if they were listening.
Had to try, yeah. That's, that's okay. Now, what I'm showing you is, superimposed over the top of the blue line, which was the revenue forecast, in a, in a green line is the actual performance or, you know, receipts into the fund. And you see there, you know, through November, really, two, two different types of trends. Overall, that we are performing just ahead of the estimate fiscal year to date. But what you see in here, if you look a little closer, is that being the first, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 months of the year, where we did perform 6.2% under the revenue estimate, and then followed by, a little bit surprisingly, through the Christmas season, bounced back, so that overall, we are just ahead of, of the estimate. Okay? So we're 0.8% ahead of the revenue estimate through, through the end of March. Okay? So that kind of shows you where we are on receipts coming in the door. The next graphic to show is an expense, an expense graphic, where you see a fair amount of variation on that $2.97 million budget. If you broke that out evenly and had average, average monthly expenses, it would be about $247,500 would be our, our typical expenditure on a month-to-month basis. You see a real spike in January of 2010, and that is the result of two items. The first is the VSP, the Early Retirement Program. That's when the city cashed out, if you will, the, the people who chose to, to take advantage of that program, so it, it drove our expenses up. You also see in there the payout of a former assistant city manager, who was, you know, contractually guaranteed a severance package, and that was paid out there. So that's, that's, that's why you see that spike. But even considering the spike there in our, our expenditures through February, we are at 96% of budget, or we are enjoying a 4% expense savings, which, to the way I like to look at things, tells, tells me, and I hope tells you, that we are, we are managing our expense budget appropriately and saving money where we can. So now you've seen both sides, revenue and expense, and now what I would like to do, and, zoom in just a little here, is real quickly walk you through four scenarios that I developed to consider in trying to figure out what kind of recommendation I wanted to put in front of you. The first one, scenario A, just basically follows the budget. Expenses at 100% are right on expense budget, revenues right on forecast. You see a $2.97 million budget, you see, let's slide that over so we can see all of those words, $1.7 million revenue estimate. You might recall from previous discussions, we started the year with just over $340,000 in the bank, which brings us to a net subsidy that I rounded up to the nearest $1,000 of $930,000. So that's what strictly following the budget would tell you, case A. Case B takes a look at kind of a best-case scenario, where we continue the trend of expenses at 96% of budget or enjoying that 4% savings, and having revenues beyond forecast. And that is essentially where we are, you know, through the February-March timeframe. And that shows that the subsidy could be as low as something on the order of $811,000. Case C is somewhat of a middle-of-the-road, so I'm going to set that aside, and we'll come back to it in just a second. And we'll skip over to case D, where this is, in some fashion, a worst case or a most-expensive scenario. And that would be where our expenses end up right on budget, that 4% savings goes away between now and the end of the fiscal year. And that our revenues go back to that trend of the first five months and cover that for the entire year, so revenues are off by 6.2 for the whole year. Shows a, a unnecessary subsidy to keep the fund whole of just over $1 million, $1,035,000. Coming back into more of a middle-of-the-road case, which is, which is my recommendation to you, assumes that we continue our expenses at 90, 96% of budget for the rest of the fiscal year, and then somewhat conservatively falls back on that revenue estimate being off by 6.2% and comes down to the rounded $916,000 forecast. So what I am recommending that you approve today is to approve the, the transfer from the city's general fund 1101 to the Development Services Enterprise Fund, Fund 2201, for an amount not to exceed $916,000. And if, for some reason, that, something doesn't track, and that turns out not to be enough, then I would come back again with more specific information, you know, if we need to make some sort of a follow-up transfer. But if you're, if you're willing, I would ask that you approve up to a $916,000 transfer to allow us to stay whole.
Question, Neil, on scenario 3C, which you're recommending, what would not allow you to meet that expenses at 96%? What could you see that could throw that off?
Frankly, I don't see anything. Actually, I think if anything, I see it continuing to come down and, and have additional savings. You know, we're not planning on any additional hires, certainly, and I'm not trying to be flipped there, but with such a large percentage of our, our expenses being, being personnel, you know, those, those costs are well-known, and the rest of our costs, such as our rent and our utilities, are relatively fixed. So I, I don't foresee scenario D in terms of expenses being realistic. But I did want to give you some, you know, a high and a low, some brackets to consider to try and put, you know, my recommendation into context.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Neil, you know, I've been pretty critical of this transfer from, you know, day one, and I'll also be very complimentary that I appreciate that this is not a $1.2 million transfer. It's 25% less at $900,000. So thank you for your, your hard work in getting this taken care of. I know it's very difficult times on out there. It was fantastic to see the building boom of January 2010, which a lot of people didn't know about, that we had a 250% increase in housing permits in the city of Sparks for the month.
Yes, sir.
And I also commend you for next year's budget. You know, your, our transfer is looking, what is it, $500,000?
Just under $500,000 is what we need to approve today.
Again, we've got, cut it by 50% this year, and so, you know, why I, I've been very tough, and, you know, and I acknowledge that, but I'd also be complimentary that we're going to cut this deficit spending by 50% again next year. So thank you, and we look forward to the day that you don't need to come in front of us looking for this money.
Thank you.
Mr. Kerrigan. Neil, real quick, do you think it's that time to bring the development services into the fold and do away with the enterprise fund until things pick up?
I, the short answer is, is yes, but I'd like to qualify it if I might. One of the things that we have been able to take real advantage of is an ability to track expenses and revenues in that fund, you know, set our fees based on the level of service that we are providing. So I think that as a city, we have enjoyed tremendous benefit, excuse me, in being able to run as much like a business as a city can. And I wouldn't want to lose those things. So yes, I would like to see us, particularly as the, you know, expenditures continue to shrink, I would like to see the fund, you know, be restored as, as part of the general fund. But I would want to retain all of the, you know, the management capabilities that we, we enjoy today, and certainly, you know, the financing software that the city has just implemented is, is set up to do that.
Right. And I didn't, I agree with you 100%. And the reason, a lot of people don't know that the reason the enterprise fund for this, for the community development, well, actually around the state, was because that it used to go to the general fund, and they would take it, and some of the developers were getting upset because they were paying into the general fund, and they were paying for other things that didn't have anything to do with growth. And so I think an enterprise fund is great for that when things are going good, but when things aren't going so well, maybe it's time to pull you back in. And then my next question is, is there a provision in state law that you could pay back the general fund? If we, you know, because basically it was, we're subsidizing your department for, well, there'd be this year and the next year. So is there, you know, in other words, I'm being optimistic and saying everything's going to get back up to where we were, not where we were, but I mean, we're going to, you know, see some upward trend.
There is, and that we are legitimately allowed to track our expenses and our revenues, and, you know, we don't have to look at each year independently. We can keep a tab or a run.
Well, that's what I wanted to do. I just was wondering if you were keeping a tab?
Yes, sir.
Because we'll call the marker in sometime.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Kerrigan.
The finance director is looking for direction from the Government Accounting Standards Board in coming months that will provide us clarity as to whether or not the enterprise fund needs to come back into the general fund. So we would prefer to leave it in its current position for the development of the budget, and will likely do an amendment just as soon as those accounting standards are clear. And I would imagine that will occur sometime within the first six months of the coming fiscal year.
Mr. Schmidt. This is, this is not much, but it looks like the, the numbers were transposed in the financial impact. Is that, it says 961 instead of 916?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's, it is 916.
My fault.
I thought maybe we were trying to squeeze a little bit more.
No, sir. My, my fault, my oversight.
Mr. Schmidt.
I was just going to make a motion if there's no other questions.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve a transfer not to exceed $916,000 from General Fund 1101 contingency funds to the Development Services Enterprise Fund 2201, and the marker be issued for it.
Mr. Schmidt. Second. Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve agenda item 6.4 is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Pass unanimously. Thanks, Neil. Thanks for the good work. Appreciate it. 6.5, possible direction to initiate a code amendment to chapter 20.56 to regulate digital dynamic signs and revise difficult, and revise difficult to administer regulations. We don't have, we don't have any of those, do we?
No.
Ms. Melby, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Today I am before you to request a possible direction to prepare amendments to chapter 2056, which is the sign section of Title 20, to regulate digital or electronic signs, and also to revise some other sections that we've had some difficulties in administering. The staff is concerned that the sign ordinance does not address new sign technologies that are being used in other parts in other cities and United States. Currently, we have three electronic or digital signs in the city of Sparks. The operators of these signs are following sign industry standards for their display, illumination, and transition times. We are seeing an increase in inquiries and pressures to have electronic message signs or the digital or electronic signs to be used more and more within the city. We are concerned that without the requirements in the code, that the sign industry or private businesses will stop following the standard sign industry guidelines, and we'd like to be able to regulate these. To illustrate, or, as a brief background, to investigate potential safety hazards, concerns, the Federal Highway Administration has been conducting studies to analyze the impacts of the electronic signs on drivers. And the FHWA has documented that glances of two seconds or greater double the risk of crashes or near crashes. Visual fixations on road signs decrease as the route, the route is traveled more frequently. However, they've found if it's electronic or digital sign where this thing is changing, that is not the case. The glances do last longer, and people want to see the resolution of what's happening on that screen. Also, what's even more dangerous are your ones that are like visual stories. People want to watch that as opposed to watching the road. Another concern is the brightness of these signs. It can cause temporary blindness. Digital signs can be like a PowerPoint in the sky. The key issues we'd like to address in this proposed amendment are the duration of the sign display, the transition times between the displays, and the illumination. Another is the type of transition. Types can be distracting, such as animation, varying in light intensity, travel, and scrolling. There are several new technologies, such as interactive signs that respond to a chip in an individual's vehicle as it passes signs, or asks the driver to text a message to get promotions or discounts or coupons. In California, digital sign monitors the signals emitted by FM radios of passing vehicles and uses information to post ads that are targeted towards the person listening to that radio station. Another one is also video display, which operates like a TV screen. The city current, the city's current code does not directly address any of these types of signs. As part of this code amendment, the staff proposes to work with the sign industry to amend several other sections of 2056 that have proven difficult to regulate. For example, the sign ordinance determines the size of a sign by the building frontage. Though the building frontage may be easy to determine, it can be difficult when you're dealing with like a shopping center. So staff is proposing, at this point, we're looking at maybe going by square footage, because everybody knows the square footage of their space. Another one that we've had some problems is the 50% opaqueness requirement on the signs. This has proven difficult to define, and so the staff would like to revise this section. As we're going through this code amendment, there may be other sections that become apparent that we need to, we work through. And we've also been talking with the sign industry and trying to get the ones that we've caused hiccups every time the building, the permits come in. Staff intends to prepare a draft amendment and then meet with the representatives from the sign industry, seeking their input prior to becoming to any public hearings. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments.
Questions. Mr. Solano.
Why don't we even have approved a code amendment to this prior to talking with the industry? My understanding is they didn't even know this code amendment was going to happen.
We've already been talking to the sign industry, and numerous people are aware.
This, we're just initiating this. We're not.
All we are is initiating. All I am asking today is that we can initiate this code amendment.
Yeah, there's no, you're not approving any code amendment today. We're just asking for permission to go get started.
Yeah.
And we'll bring something back.
Okay. We brought up in a conversation the other night at a function I attended, and they, they said that the city was going to change the code, and that they didn't even know anything what, what it was going to be changed to. So obviously, we're just at the starting point.
Yes, sir. Where the funding?
All right.
Mr. Kerrigan. The only question I had is, you have on here, there's two electric billboards. I can only think of two. Where's the third?
There's three.
Okay. There's, there's the one in Victorian Square. There's one by Rail City.
Right. And then there's one on McCarran.
Okay. My question is, how do they get away with putting up a electronic billboard? If we don't have it? In other words, is everybody else that has a billboard somewhere, they could put up an electronic billboard before we have this code amendment finished?
That's correct.
So, I mean, didn't they have to have permission?
We do have in our sign ordinance right now, we have electronic message boards, and that's why we permitted those signs under electronic permission. But those do not regulate the illumination, the transition times.
Yeah, I understand that, but if I was the sign industry right now, I'd try, if they thought they could make $3 million versus $300,000, I'd change every one of my signs to digital before I got, you got anything finished. You see my point?
Yeah, that's why we would like to get this going, because there is a strong financial incentive for them to convert the signs.
Right. But what I'm saying is, do we need to have any kind of a stopgap in there so they can't do this until we're done? I guess this would be the chat.
That would be, yeah.
Like a moratorium?
Yeah.
We like the M-word. The old M-word. We've been down this road before. Go ahead, Neil.
From a staff perspective, we don't see the need for a moratorium at this point in time. Some initial conversations that we've had with members of the sign industry, that I think they understand where we're coming from, and they see where we're trying to go as an effort to make Sparks more predictable, more transparent, and more business-friendly. So I think we've got a good tone set.
We're not going to see the ACLU attorney from Las Vegas appear.
Well, you might. I would never predict whether.
Yeah, I just, I could just see that whole scenario again. And also, we're not looking for more billboards.
No, sir.
No.
No. And, and in terms of the ACLU and attorneys in general, our efforts will not go anywhere near sign content. We will remain neutral.
Attorneys in general.
Okay. But I could just see something about First Amendment in digital now. I'm just, you know, guessing.
It's a sign of the times.
Ms. Ratty.
Okay, thanks.
I guess a similar question. First, were we going to look at numbers at all, numbers of signs as part of this?
We haven't decided. You mean, as opposed to, there has been a lot of communities that have come up with, I'm just trying to find out your question. Are you saying that, like, if you put up a digital sign, you have to take down X number of other signs? At this point, we're not, we're not entertaining that, but we haven't.
No, we're not entertaining that, and following the experience in West Sparks, where they started down the path of something very similar. You can have, you know, one electronic billboard, but you have to take down, I don't know, three, four, five, six. That did blow up and, and become combative from, from day one, and ultimately was, was pulled off so that the staff could go do it again in a friendlier manner.
And then the second question, can we also include some analysis of the impact when they're close to residential areas of the light? Because I've had some complaints about the one that is in Sparks that's closer to the freeway, because it is right over. freeway because it is right over that neighborhood.
That was one of, yeah, one of the things that we are looking at is if somebody wants to put in a digital sign or it would not be able to face residential. Because that is one of the concerns, those, the lights from those signs do project a long distance.
And then third, is there anything in this that would, I haven't seen many of them here, but I've seen a lot of them in Sacramento, of the trucks that are driving around that have the moving, the rotating billboard on the back of the truck?
That is something that we have, I need to talk to the city attorney's office about if we can regulate that because that is, a truck is on the street and so that doesn't fall under Title 20, is my understanding.
I guess I would be curious.
That would become the fall under the police department, I would believe, because that's not what, Title 20 doesn't regulate vehicles.
I would be curious if any other communities are regulating or trying to figure out a way to regulate digital images on vehicles.
I know that is a big thing coming, buses also.
That is, that is something that we will be happy to look into.
Not associated with this.
I would like to do it separately from today's action.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Mr. Carrigan.
I just thought of something while we were talking. Since they're changing it from a, just a normal billboard to a digital, is there any place in there we can get a franchise fees for this?
That's actually been an informal discussion item amongst staff, is certainly the revenue per sign would be anticipated to go up. So perhaps one of the things to look at is maybe from a business license approach, you know, how much revenue these things are generating and making sure that it gets properly purported to the city.
Great.
Chair of the will. Okay, any further discussions? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt.
I move to direct staff to initiate a code amendment to the Title 2056 of the municipal code as outlined.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve agenda item 6.5 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Carrigan, thanks, Neil. I knew you wanted to make a motion. 6.6, consideration and possible award of the Victorian Square Phase 2 Public Improvement Project. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't see there's anything different of this than we did in the redevelopment agency, so I'll make a motion to approve this item.
Mr. Schmidt. Second. Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 6.6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Good job, pal. Wore that tie for nothing. Okay, next is public hearings. We have none, comments from the public, no, I'm sorry, comments from the council and city manager, Mr. Smith.
Me? I got nothing.
Oh, I forgot to erase you then. Anyone else? I see a couple of young gentlemen in the back here. Can you let us know what you're here for?
What's that?
For what?
What's that?
Come on up and give us your name and tell us why you're here, real quick. Don't worry, there's only, there's only two or three million people watching, so I wouldn't worry about that. Just give us your name and tell us what you're going here.
Hi, my name's Quinn Palmit and we're here for Mayor Bash.
And you are?
I'm Ann Marie Outland and I'm here for Mayor Bash.
Well, what'd you think so far? All right. I won't embarrass you any further. Thanks for coming and thanks for watching your government and progress and thanks, Mom, for bringing the young gentleman down here, we appreciate it. All right, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.